This is the amenities committee meeting on Tuesday, the sixth of February at six o'clock. We'll start with item six four one. Do we have any declarations of any disclosable pecuniary interests, please? None? Thank you very much. Do we have any apologies for absence?
Full house, sorry.
Full house. Although noted, Chris Harvey's quite rightly prioritised going to his granddaughter's birthday party. I'm very jealous. No, I'll have to ask for the cake. Minutes from our amenities committee meeting on the 30th of January for approval. Are you all happy? Thank you very much. So I will then take, sorry Nick, I'm gonna move it back. I'm gonna take item six five two, which is the support, proposed support for a crossing on London Road. And this is an item requested by councillor Vic Peters and he has provided text of a letter. And Vic's not well, so he can't present this evening. So we've got Vic standing. Nice to use you, Stuart.
Right, I have a letter from Vic. He sends apologies for whatever to make tonight. Unfortunately, not very well. Vic states, councillors, thank you for affording me the opportunity to present this item again. I'm sorry that I'm unable to do so personally, but you're aware of my current situation and this has prevented me from doing so. It is, I believe, shameful that this item was not able to be aired sufficiently for council, but the obstruction from a certain group of individuals made the whole process was unable to happen. I also thank you, thank you for inviting Mrs Newk and Mrs Hay to this evening's meetings, thus giving them the opportunity to present to council what they had intended to do so before council. It was prevented by the aforementioned interference and in a less formal, less intimidating forum. I'm happy that we were able to agree to give backing to this campaign and in light of the history of this area of road, road coupled with a report from the coroner, that the letter I drafted for council might be rewritten to include any relevant information, but still backing a zebra crossing at this, as this seems to be both the simplest to install whilst becoming extremely visible for both drivers and pedestrians alike. I was also pleased to note that there are some short-term measures being introduced on the stretcher road that would have been mentioned, but for the aforementioned disruption. Thanks again, Vic Peters.
Lovely, thanks Stuart. Any comments, please, from councillors?
I think this is just another long-running issue of our speed awareness campaigns, the 30 for Thetford, the SAM two stuff, all the things we've been trying to implement over the last, you know, it's many years now, actually, unfortunately. You know, unfortunately, it really, it's upsetting to find that the only time we get any impetus is when there's a tragic accident. And, you know, that's the only time we really get good response from highways and council. Because up until then, it's just another normal road. So I think it's something we should try and get behind as a community, not just a council. So that's all I'd say.
Thank you, Ben. Carla, please.
As I, I subscribe to what Mac said, and I think we mentioned that to try to gather statistics to support introduction of measures in a crossing, that they collect data mostly when there's actually a tragedy, as they have recently, not necessarily any other circumstances of near misses. And I think that that is, that is an issue that needs to be addressed. There has gotta be a way that this information can be documented to bank good to better support a claim to introduce a neck for the actual, the county to spend the money in putting the definite measures in place that actually are more effective.
Okay, thank you. Mike, please.
Thank you. I'd like to agree with Mac and I also want to stress the importance that we've attached to the town council to road safety in this particular respect over a period of time and we managed to get a kind of virtual, an almost 30% system throughout. The problem with that is enforcement. There's a reluctance on the part of the authorities to commit to spending money to make sure that the traffic rules are obeyed. So it's quite a lot speeding goes on in Thetford, despite the 30 mile an hour improvement. And I think that anything we do which makes pedestrians' life easier and has the accidental effect of slowing down traffic or at least controlling traffic so it becomes manageable, it's a good thing. So for that reason, I totally support the concept of some kind of crossing. I'm a bit concerned that we heard earlier, I think from Stuart, that it's likely that the council will be more interested in a pushback pedestrian crossing than something else if that's kind of a bit limited. But I understand, again, that the one advantage it has is over a zebra crossing is it is that even safer. People, car drivers, drivers in general, vehicle drivers do respect a red traffic light. I've not often seen people cutting lights in that situation or do it in crossroads, but less often, I think, with pedestrian crossings. So I'm really hopeful that if we go ahead with this, whatever happens, we'll have slower speeds and we'll have more pedestrian security. So great, let's win for it.
Okay, Stuart.
Yeah, I think obviously personally, we should be acting very, very, very quickly on this before something else happens. Yes, I know we've got consultations, but we've got to have a preventative before anything else sort of happens further along the line. Because having a bit, if something happened again in two, three weeks, you know, would it, if you know what I mean, it's gonna be sort of very sad. And we need to sort of show that we do, we're sort of supporting these people.
John.
Yeah, I wanted to first say I'm sorry, I'm feeling lost. And thank you really for having the courage to come and speak at this place of Orton Forum, which must be difficult. I'm a newer member of council, so I can't claim any credit for all the work that's gone before in terms of reducing speed limits, reducing speeding and all of the other measures that have been put in place. I'm a regular walker and cyclist around town and I think there's a lot still to be done in making the town safer for people like me and especially for children and young people. So I'll be supporting any moves we can make to make the council sit up and listen really.
Lovely, thank you. So I made a couple of notes there of some comments. I think we need to make the letter as strong as we possibly can because this is, you know, an important subject. I think referencing or even attaching a copy of the coroner's report to our letter. I see quite a lot of coroner's reports and she was quite clear in that report that there needs to be changes. And I think we need to, Norfolk County Council have seen that, but we need to remind them that that document exists. And I think the points about referencing other efforts to address road safety, this isn't just a starting point now. We've been trying to improve road safety in Thetford for years and we should reference some of the other things. It took two years at least to get county to reduce the speed limit from 40 to 30 in residential areas. That was a lot of hard work from county councillors cross-party. So we need to reference some of that. And also the work that we're doing as a town council, I mean, it shouldn't be overlooked. We're putting a lot of time, staff time into moving the camera around. That's not normally what a town council does, but we are doing that. We are playing our part. And I think we should reference that in the letter. Personally, I think we should remove reference to the word zebra. We don't know if a toucan or a pelican crossing is more appropriate. That's why they have the safety advisors at county to advise on the best possible crossing. And I think I put the onus on them rather than us saying zebra. And I think that we should be inviting them to come and address this meeting. We talk about highways issues a lot. We talk about road safety. We're about to get this road safety fund implemented. So let's take the opportunity to get them down to explain what they are doing. And then we can put some pressure on them as councillors to, you know, make sure they're aware of the situation. So that would be my two pennies. Hazel.
Just on the specifics of the letter, where it says we're aware that there are some new measures that will be placed on the stretcher road, I think we could be more specific and say we want to very quickly see improvements and additions added.
An emphasis on speed, speed to, speed of implementation. Carla.
I agree with what you said. I think it's, it's great that we're doing what we can for the safety of our residents at town council level, but it is a responsibility of highways and county. In that respect, we need to put the pressure on them. So I fully support the idea of bringing one of their officers that are actually responsible for this, you're making to actually hear directly on in from us, come to from the council and the residents, what's going on, because that puts a certain sense of urgency to the matter for them to actually get on with those, with those measures. Don't have to wait to drag on months after months and years after years and make sure those measures are in place before something else happens.
Thank you. So if you're content taking those points on board, I think Alan's been scribbling away and so have I. So Alan and I worked together on a final version and we'll get the mayor to sign it once there's a final version. Can I take a show of hands? I think I need a proposer and a seconder. Reading the recommendation. Yeah, so the recommendation is to agree that a letter is sent to Norfolk County Council. Would somebody like to propose that, please? Carla Barretto and a seconder, Mac McDonald. Thank you, Mac. All those in favour? Thank you. So we can add to our letter that that was unanimous. Thank you. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but equally, we won't be offended if you leave. We make sure we send them a copy of the letter. Okay, moving on to item six four nine, which is the public consultation on the Ramsey Close play area. Probably, yeah, yeah, missed, misnaming there because it's rather, not very grand play area currently, but I suppose a play area officially it is. So you've seen the report in your packs which outlines the history of the site and the sort of where we're at now. The recommendation at the bottom, which is summarized, which is that a consultation letter is delivered to all homes on the Norwich Road Estate, seeking their views on the proposed change of use, with replies being sent to mail at thetfordtowncouncil.co.uk. I've just made a note there and also hard copies as well. I assume everyone on email. The deadline for responses will be 5pm on Monday, the 4th of March, so that responses can be collated and tabled at the 5th of March amenities committee meeting. The estimated print cost of £75 and the design cost of approximately £50. Delivery will be undertaken by Thetford Town Council staff to keep costs to a minimum. All costs to be met by the allotments reserve that exists solely for the creation of new allotments. Secondly, a drop-in session will take place at the church on the way during February from 4pm to 7pm, depending on the availability of the venue. Residents will be asked to drop in and speak to officers about the proposals and view the layout and any questions and ask any questions. All councillors will be invited to attend, plus the chair of the town council allotments committee and the chair of the town council amenities committee. The far higher fee of the church will be met by Thetford Town Council. Any questions or comments on those recommendations?
Yeah, as, as a resident of the area, I think, as was mentioned earlier, this is probably something that most people would want in any case. And I think it's a good opportunity for us to show that we're trying to be transparent in it. I think the costs that were highlighted for, you know, the hire of the hall and the other bits are really well-spent money. If I'm, if I'm honest, you know, if it makes the people understand what we're trying to achieve. And let's face it, there's not going to be many Ramsey Closes that we own that we're going to change the use of in the town. So this really is a good opportunity to do something correctly and, and, you know, get everybody on board. Because I do think there's an opportunity for an improvement of the site. So what I would say is some of the, some of our letters that have been circulated amongst us have done a lot of explaining of, of why we've gone to the decision. And not all of that is completely necessary or entirely accurate. So I think what we need to do is just say, listen, we're at this position. This is what we would like to do to improve the site. And that's really what a consultation is about. And I think you were absolutely right at the beginning when you said we ought to identify what we think a consultation is in the future, because, you know, who knows, it may come up again.
It means different things to different people.
Yes.
Lesson learned.
Yeah.
Any other comments, please? Stuart?
Yeah, I've sort of go along with Mac's sort of sentiments, but first thing really, I'm just, I think it sounds critical that we handled it quite wrongly to start with. As Mac said, residents are quite up for having allotments, but it's looked like we've been pushed on to them before we've consulted with them with the originally, you know, the first letter that came out. And so consultation is definitely right. And I think we'll get positive responses. It's not, you know, like, it's not often you can change a piece of land. And I do like the idea where, you know, it could be a little bit communal area as well, where you could have a few benches and allotments alongside the allotments. Yeah, a tea shop.
A tea shop? Are you coming down there?
On a motor railway.
It's Stuart's ice cream. Carla, please.
I was gonna say, it's the human nature to be resistant to changes when you don't get included. Obviously, if people feel that they're part of the decision of the planning, the whole process of reaching to a, to an implementation of a project such as this, they will take ownership of that because we decided that this was best for us and also while working together. So it is definitely about shaping this, deciding on the shape of that consultation. Obviously, we have to have some sort of format that works best. But definitely including the residents is the best approach.
Yes, I'm supportive too. I really think we should be asking residents what they think and I'm very happy to see that we're going to be doing that.
Lovely, thank you. Okay, I think nobody else indicating. So the recommendations are as tabled in the report with the amendment that we would accept hard copies, not just email copies of responses. Can I have a proposal for those recommendations? John and a seconder? Matt? All those in favour? Thank you very much. Lovely. I assume you'll be staying to at least Max here, so but you're, same principle, you're welcome to leave. We won't be offended. Move on to item six four four. Waiting patiently. Town team managers' report. Over to you, Nick.
Okay, so a bit of an update from the town team. So town team report January 2024. Town team have carried out a range of tasks during the month of January. Tasks have included the maintenance and cleaning, checking of the town's street furniture, playparks, public toilets, allotment sites, open spaces and cemetery, as well as buildings and assets owned by the town council. We've also been working alongside Breckland Council and Norfolk County Council and highways to report any issues under their ownerships to help improve the town. The first one is underpasses. The town team have recently visited the minister gate, Glee Close and Croxton Road underpasses to assist for keeping these clean and free from graffiti. They also attended to the drains and the full wash downs carried out to eliminate owners and fouling in these areas. We continue to contact Norfolk highways to stress to them that these assets are their responsibility and they have an obligation to maintain them. Street lighting, so Amy Norfolk street lighting and Breckland council have recently both been contacted with regards to streetlights not working in and around the town. The faulty lights and locations reported so far include King Street, two units, School Lane, car park, three units, Abbey Estate, five units, Yorkway, five units. Abbey Estate shop precinct, there is no lights operational at the present time. All responsible, all responsible parties have confirmed that all units which have been reported are being checked and repaired or replaced where needed going forward. They've also urged the councillors and the public to continue to report any faulty lighting not currently operational to them. Dog fouling issues, so the team have recently been reporting through dog fouling issues to Breckland council and asked that they look into this issue. This is an urgent issue that needs tackling on the Fairfields and Admirals Estates, as well as some areas of the Abbey Estate that's been highlighted. We've released a social media post to encourage the public and dog owners to be more considerate and to remind them that the dog fouling is an offence. The team has also sent email correspondence to Breckland council to request that Serco team visit frequently and enforce these issues. Breckland have responded. This has now been passed on to the environmental health and the dog warden, who will contact you in due course to action what's needed to rectify this issue. We will also raise worksheets for Serco to attend and cleanse these areas in the meantime frequently. I also have a further update since that report was done and they have come back today to say that they would like to work and continue to work with us on enforcing the dog fouling issues around the town. So there'll be a little bit of a bit of further update later on in the meeting. Street furniture, the town team have continued to clean and wash and remove the graffiti from the town's street furniture and playparks and motorsports as part of their regular ongoing cleaning schedules. They continue to report through any litter bins and dog waste bins that need replacement as going forward. These will be scheduled in between the town council and Breckland in identifying the ones under different ownerships and responsibilities to be replaced. Request was also made to Norfolk highways to seek permission and a licence for their installation of a new litter bin close to the grammar school. I'm pleased to confirm that permission has now been granted for this to be installed. We are now awaiting confirmation from both Breckland and Serco that the acknowledgement of this information so that the collection of waste can be routinely carried out and booked in once the bin has been installed by the town team. New signage for sites, so the new signage has recently been installed at the cemetery site. And this now contains information of new revised opening hours, as well as the emergency contact number for a member of staff outside of normal workplace working hours. Other signage for the public toilet sites is currently being created and will go live in the coming weeks. Again, this information will also contain the opening hours of each site, as well as the out of hours emergency number, should any issues occur or need to be resolved immediately. We also have developed a five-question survey through a QR code, as well as a manual option on the website. This will enable the public to inform officers in the committee through regular updates to how happy they are with these facilities. Moving on, so the Castle Mound and Ramparts, specialist grounds contractor has now been submitted, has now submitted their quotation for the Castle Mound works, which will include the vegetation cutting and the self-sectory removals and treating. Historic England are now processing the consent of works and this is currently being fast-tracked through their team, ready for the works to be started on site. The grazer has been sourced for all grazing sites and this will see the Castle Mound graze for the first time in a number of years going forward. A new grazing licence is being submitted and this will be written up for the one grazer to graze all sites. The chosen grazer is also keen to promote the open spaces through the art of grazing and his livestock. He would also like to support further with the following: educational visits, guided walks, school visits, town events, bid writing for open spaces, works where possible. I can also update that, I've also had an update since the report was written from Historic England. They have now passed the request on to the secretary of state and this is being currently fast-tracked as soon as possible for the work to proceed as quickly as possible. Melford Common, there have been a number of incidents of wooden posts being pushed over and some have even been removed from the Melford Common. There has also been reports of motorbike activity and vehicles taking shortcuts across the site. The team have been responding to the incidents by replacing any missing posts and making the area safe, as well as installing and concrete in the new posts in to prevent further removal. We have also submitted reports to Norfolk Constabulary to make them aware of these issues occurring. Barnham Commons, a mechanical cutting will be taking place on Barnham Common. These works are part of the management plan, which will see the vast amount of gorse and vegetation removed that has grown and taken over within the central areas of the common site. All information regarding this activity has been posted out to make the public aware of the works and the reasons why this has taken place. This needs to be removed to allow the site to be maintained, managed, allowing wildflowers and wildlife to thrive on the protected site. Fencing has recently been damaged on several of the areas of Barnham Common. The town team have visited a number of times to carry out repairs where criminal act damage has taken place and the fencing cut. All incidents again were reported through to Norfolk Constabulary. Officers in the new grazer will be meeting alongside Norfolk police and the rural crimes team in the next week, ahead of the grazing season, to look at the enforcement and how the grazer can be supported at stopping the criminal activity of their livestock being also attacked by dogs off leads on the sites. The Fredericks Wood, Woodlands and Fairfields, the town team recently visited the site and carried out the trim back of vegetation and hedging to allow the footpath areas to be better accessible. The Kent Town Council's arboret cultural contractor is now putting together a quotation for the works needed to the boundary trees and once this is in, it will be submitted for approval. The team are also notified from councillors and the public about the horrendous dog foul and taking issues, issues taking place close to Fredericks Wood and the walkways. New signage for the TTC land has now been ordered and will be put up in due course to help try and discourage this horrendous activity. We've also sent over correspondence to both Breckland Environmental Services and the Serco team to request that the enforcement team to look into this urgently. SAM two, so the SAM two speed machine has recently been installed on Nick Neill Way and will be gathering data for a period of four weeks. This initially proved difficult to install because of the regulations surrounding the machine. With cars often parked alongside the highway where this needs to be cleared for the machine to work correctly. The data once retrieved will then be passed over to Norfolk highways and Norfolk police. We've recently received requests in from the public for the machine to next be placed on the Mill Lane for the next location. The team are already looking for a suitable location along the stretcher road, as we've recently been informed again that a pedestrian was sadly knocked down in this area. Allotment sites, the town team have recently carried out and assisted in clearance works of allotment plots at the Mumford Road site, where these can now be reallocated to new tenants. Playparks, the team have recently been cleaning equipment play on play areas and also carrying out repair works where possible. A new nest wing was being installed at the Red Castle play area. Graffiti removed from all play areas and equipment washed where needed. The Castle Park gear is currently buried off, if anybody has noticed, and this has a fault that has been further investigated. As soon as this equipment has been checked and the parts potentially replaced that needed, the equipment will be reopened as soon as possible. Other works the team have also been recently carrying out include clearance of White Hart Street cobbled areas around the top of the street, removal of abandoned highway signage no longer in use, removal of redundant street furniture fixings, replacement of posts where needed, removal of flypostering, Legionella compliance monitoring for our burnews and buildings, facilities checks, minor repair works to the fish pass following flooding, replacement of skate park hedging where previously vandalised will be carried out in due course. Tree grant projects, so following the successful application, we have now a total of 19 trees awaiting to be planted over the period of February. Trees will be planted over two sites to replace those sadly lost and where previously planted at both the cemetery and Barnham Common amenity spaces. We're currently in the process of now liaising with the local schools and members of the community to see if we can get community support in planting these on the local cemetery, as well as the Barnham Common area. The other trees will also be planted by the conservation volunteers at the Barnham Common in due course. Conservation volunteers, so the volunteers have been busy working alongside David and the town team throughout the month of January 24. Sites including Barnham Common have seen further removal of gorse and vegetation as part of the management plans for sites on the riverside of the common. Litter picking and checking of the sites was also carried out to report back any concerns for the areas. The group have also continued to check fences and gates, as well as litter pick sites, including Barnham Common, Ford Meadow, Castle Park, Fredericks Wood and Main Street Woodland. Up and coming works for the group, so creating scrapes for the creeping marshwork, Marshwater Site will also be carried out to help encourage this rare plant to thrive further. This, we hope, will be carried out with the support and guidance of plant life. Permissions have now been granted from Natural England for these works to proceed in due course. Installation of further bird boxes and bat boxes, as well as owl boxes for the open spaces where possible. These will then be mapped and passed on to the relevant organisations licensed to monitor them for us working together going forward. Scrub clearance on the riverside of the common to finalise this month. Checking fences and gates ahead of the grazing season, installation of new wooden benches within the open spaces if funding can be sought. We recently have also received an update from the BTO on the nesting surveys carried out in 2023 for the London Road Cemetery. And this has shown great results with a total of 24 chicks fledged successfully from the site, including a range of blue tits, grey tits, coltits and blackbirds. Community participation for open spaces 24. We are currently in the process of looking at ways that we can engage, engage with the community and the public going forward. This will be through a series of events working in partnership together. Wild about Thetford Town event 2024, this will be held following the success of last year's event that took place. Barnham Common guided walks, joined with the grazer and David, our conservation officer, and the volunteers. And school and community trips to our open spaces on expert-led walks, bats, birds, butterflies, flora and fauna. In total, the hours volunteered this month equated to 24 hours. Moving on back to the town team, so we have recently sent out some job applications. It will be going out shortly. We've produced those ready to be looked at and approved for tonight's meeting. So that will be for two new town team members and one town janitor for the public toilets. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's plenty there to get your teeth into, folks. Mac, please.
All without taking a breath.
Yes, quite.
So yeah, it makes us all feel a bit inadequate. So what I would say on the underpasses, that's really good news. Where the underpasses border Network Rail, there's been a lot of fly tipping recently. We reported that on Glee, but they did come and pick it up, but they only picked up the bits that we talked about. So if there was another pile next to it or a traffic sign, they left that. So it's just something to bear in mind that actually they will come and do it if we push them. Dog fouling, thank you for that. We've been in touch with Steve Hitchman now, who's doing that for Breckland on the Admirals Estate and he's really keen. So I think we can replicate that in all our different estates. Yeah, so a couple of requests. Because you're going round and moving old signposts and generally tidying our town up, is there any way you can pick up some of the redundant metal temporary signframes? I've asked three different highways engineers over the years to do this and they, they have not been able to do it because many of them belong to contractors and it's not on highways, register, radar, whatever. If you need to, I can point you in the direction where a lot of them are. You will see them when you do litter picking. They're all over. If you need to, I can point you in the direction where a lot of them are, you'll see when you do litter picking, they're all over the town. So there's that one. And one other plea, it's really good that you're doing all the bird bat owl boxes and kind of stuff. Is there any possibility that we could look at promoting that for somebody like the Men's Shed? Who, who do it locally, build them locally and it would really give them a project to get into and would be a good news story for us to sort of lead in.
And on the road signs, I'll say this to everybody. If you see any that have been there for a while, obviously not one that's just gone up, just drop Nick an email. He's removed so many for me and my own ward over the last few weeks. I normally send him about one a week because I don't, you know, I know they're really busy, so I just choose which one to send each week. And they always go out within days and remove them. And at some point, I, I think we might sell them back to Norfolk County Council. I think we're getting quite a collection these days, so.
That value for.
Yeah, must be.
Yeah, it's a modern art.
Yes. Well, yeah, so send them through. Honestly, I, I can't bear street clutter and the way they just, you know, leave them laying around. There's one on opposite entrance to Vicarage Road, which was there for about six months. The team have taken that away recently. So yeah, who send it through? On the bird boxes, I just quickly read the report that's been left for us. And it talks about the need to do some maintenance of the existing bird box that are there. Is there a need for any additional bird boxes? Are they identified? So I'm just wondering, you know, we have a budget and I'm thinking maybe we should be buying them from, because I know they sell them from Men's Shed. And seeing as we've got, you know, a dedicated group that know what they're doing, I'm all for buying some additional units to, to stick up.
I sat next to Ricky Alock at the awards the other day and he said, they're making them and they don't have an outlet to get rid of them. Not very savvy on the selling part of it, if you like. They're good at making, but not. So I think we could help perhaps.
Yeah. It would make. Come to the arrangement with them and we'll, we'll buy a bulk. So that's good.
And they do, they do bespoke stuff. So if you want something in particular, even if it's planters, they make them as well. So something we could look at perhaps.
Thank you, Mac. Stuart next please.
Um, yeah, can I just thank Nick and your team for the response on St Frederick's Wood, Fairfields and Woodlands. And obviously a hotspot which residents sort of flagged up. And it doesn't look really nice now. And also I think I spoke about the pathway behind Admiral School. That's also a real hotspot that's, I think Mac has picked up on. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Next, John.
Yes, I, I thank you so much, Nick. That was amazing. I've been sent here tasked by residents of Liberty Gardens to mention dog fouling as well, unfortunately. I had a walk around Fredericks Wood and the pathways around this afternoon. All looked really great. So thank you for that. And I reported a couple of incidents of dog fouling on Fairfields. So it then goes to Breckland, who send your message back saying they'll give it to Cercor or something. There was no sign of them doing anything about it, but. So is it, is it them that do the cleaning or is it you?
Breckland are the district's sort of enforcing authority, if you like. So they have the powers to enforce. One of the updates a little bit later on will just sort of cover the basis of where they're kind of proposing to come in with the council and work together going forward. So we've got to update a little bit more. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Can I carry on?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, sorry. Brilliant news on the grazer.
Yes.
About that. It, it looks like he's got a beautiful herd. Is he aware, is he well aware of the dangers of bringing them to Fethford?
Yes.
He is. Okay, good. Also really pleased, also pleased about the conservation work on Barnham Common and Woodlands pathway hedge, which was long overdue. I've talked to Men's Sheds before actually about doing nest boxes. They said they'd be really happy to do them to meet your specifications. You just need to make sure they've got the, got the Biden sheets or whatever. And yeah, that'd be a really good idea. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else please? No, just a couple for me. I'm a bit homework for you, Nick. I don't know if anyone else can add. For as long as I've been here, we've referred to it as Fredericks Wood. And I always thought it was because of the Julie Singh connection, as in Freddie Julie Singh. And now we're referring it to Sir Frederick. And there was a Sir Frederick who was a previous MP of Fethford from the Grafton family. So I'm just curious, which one is it? Who, who, which Freddie are we talking about? It'll be one of those two, but Freddie Julie Singh wasn't a sir. So yeah, I'm just curious. I think there's a really, you know, historic connection here. Why, why are we inheriting this?
Freddie Laker, is it?
Who, why was he a sir? No. All right, okay. So yeah, I just wanted to check what we're doing. I think it's Julie Singh, but it might be the other one. As long as we know the real reason. You've mentioned various other bits and pieces in the report. I know the before and after for some of these because I was the one that nagged you about them. I would, and I say this every month, I think we're missing a real trick putting before and after pictures on social media. Because I know the work that you guys do at the top of White Hart Street, there's those lovely cobbles near the traffic lights. Complete, and I sit there on the traffic lights going to work and they're completely covered in moss and they were horrible. And there's all sorts of lichens and stuff growing up the posts. Not our responsibility at all. It's highways. I tried to get them to come and clean it. They wouldn't do it. So the town team went because actually we take, it's a real high visibility area. And the before and after picture actually would have been really striking. So we need to be doing more. Be good. As Yann says, over the moon about graziers and the go ahead for work at Castle Park. I think that'll be really visible the next few months. It does need to be managed sort of sensitively, but actually it's long overdue, particularly at Castle Park. And if we get a good reliable grazer who said, does what they say they're going to do in terms of public talks and all the rest of it, that'd be amazing. And job descriptions, I'm happy to be guided by the committee. It might just be me being pedantic, but I really hate the use of the title town janitor. We're not in America. The only two alternatives I have is public toilet assistant or town amenities assistant, both of which I would prefer to town janitor.
Amenities.
Amenities assistant. Chair, I'm really sorry.
Sorry, everyone. I've got to go to the day job, even though it's slightly an evening.
You enjoy.
Really good. Thank you.
We'll go with town amenities assistant. Good. And you've mentioned, although we're not the allotments committee, you've mentioned the team have been helping with allotments creations. How many overgrown, under, you know, unused allotments or unused allotment spaces have we brought back into use?
So there is four that they cleared.
Yeah. Good. So that's bringing land that should be being used back into use, which again is really positive.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
It's not a fully formulated thought, that's why I'm thinking of, does this go any further than?
So I was hoping we're going to do a sort of a press release on the Facebook and things with it, just to sort of put a good news story out. But I have gone back to the organisation just to check and make sure they're happy for us to release all the documents that are there. I can't see the reason why not, but I'll just wait for them to confirm back.
Yeah, sure.
As soon as we get our clearance, we'll, we'll pop that onto the social media, just to put some good news out.
Yeah, good. I was going to say it's National Nest Box Week next week.
Brilliant.
Oh, there you go. Timely.
We are on trend as usual.
There you go. Just on it.
So there's your social media post because we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna get some Men's Shed boxes up during National Nest Box. Nest Box. Perfect. Brilliant. Thank you.
Yeah, I was thinking I could do something similar for Fredericks Wood, actually. There's not many nest box occupants, but there's loads of nests in there. So I could send you a similar report.
That'd be brilliant. That'd be brilliant.
Yes, whether it's Sir Fredericks Wood or just Frederick. Either or. The sun was not. Anyway, anyway, let's move on. Thank you as much for that, Nick, as ever. Right, six, four, five burial administrators report. Anything to add, Alan, to the report that was circulated?
Pretty good as much with the beginning of the calendar year for German, so.
Yep. And we've passed the point now for Christmas wreaths to be removed. Has that all happened?
So the team are currently working on it at the moment.
Yeah. Item two, cemetery fees and charges. There's a recommendation in relation to child burials. It's been included in the report. Anything you want to add?
I, I think it's a pretty. We just added the, the very last point is to make sure the funeral directors, if, if, if they are actually claiming from the fund. Because otherwise if we're charging them, they talk to the family, then the, you know, the families aren't getting anything from the CFF that's being said.
So the current situation is that we do charge. But because of a change in the law, there is funding available. That means we don't have to charge. And basically this recommendation is about bringing us up to date with the change in the law. And essentially it means that there will be no charge to the family for a child burial. Any questions on that recommendation? Nick, could I have a proposer to that effect? Stuart and a second up, Hazel, all in agreement? Thank you very much. Okay. We have item six, four, six, the preliminary financial report for amenities. Give us one exciting item from this report. There's a challenge.
I've defeated. Before I even started. I, I think considering the challenges we've had in our playbox, we're actually, we're not doing too bad. I, I, I mean, our vehicle costs are going up quite a bit. We've got rid of all our old vehicles, which were costing, starting to cost us a fortune. They were still in lease agreements. We managed to get rid of, get rid of them. We have to come up with a new vehicle replacement plan, which we're not going to get Nick inside for a couple of minutes because we will actually start doing. But otherwise it's, you know, I, I think we will, overall, we, we, we have done. Our expenditure is, is up by nine thousand and our income is down by four thousand. So we do have a thirteen thousand swing around. If you take up clay parks, that's not too bad. So I think it's just one of these things. I think we'll be, we'll, we'll be okay at the end of the year. We will have a slight amount spent. But, you know, I think the amount of work that we've done is just incredible.
Yeah. The, the, the total variance for the whole amenities budget is thirteen thousand, six, thirty. And the variance for playparks is thirteen thousand, five hundred and eleven. And that kind of tells a story on its own. Any other questions on the amenities budget? Nope. Moving on to the cemetery budget, the next page.
There's another three hundred and sixty pounds of fees that were involved in January, they were only involved in February. So our income goes up to thirty thousand. So our income has been very disappointing. We, we weighed down. But we've caught up a little bit in terms of the, the, well, I said we caught up in expenditure, but we actually haven't. Because of our ground water monitoring. But again, I think we, we're not going to exceed budget from an expenditure side. But we are going to be significantly less from an income perspective. That's also going to have, Nick, this impact on our finances.
Any questions on cemetery finances?
Well, just, I know it sounds, it's a real daft question and you say the cemetery budget is down. Is that purely because there's lack of people dying?
No.
Right, okay. Sorry. Real silly question. No, I like silly question.
Sorry, I can't get that to respond. I think there's two, there's, there's two factors. One is that the, um, the mix of parishioners versus non parishioners, there's a significant cost variation there to, to, to the family or to the funeral directors. And the second thing is we think that there's more ashes and tournaments than there are burials. And ashes and tournament has a different. And the third thing is people have been buying exclusive rights to burial over the years. So that income stops to trail away because we don't have that many graves. Where, where, that we, we resell them. I think we've only, we've bought back one grave, which we can resell going forward. So our income stream with a bit of hindsight is, would always decline because of that particular factor.
Thank you very much. Very difficult to set a budget for the cemetery because you, you're having to do a, a guesstimer as to how many ashes and tournaments, how many burials. And, and you don't know. But the fixed costs, I mean, the maintenance, you don't do less maintenance. Carla.
I was just going to ask, I remember last time we discussed cemeteries, there was an issue with the capacity in the cemetery to, you know, the numbers of requests to have burials versus the number of sort of grave spaces available. And we were nearly at full capacity. Have we reached that capacity, you know, and how does that impact the budget itself? And if we reach full capacity, are we still under budget, even though we have a full cemetery that we can accept in more burials? That's what I'm trying to sort of versus compare for financial purposes. Is the cemetery is the full, are we still under budget and we're reliant just on the ashes and tournaments? Or can we, we still have space to grow that budget? Trying to understand that a bit.
So we're allowed twenty five for the year, burials. So presumably the budget for the income point of view is based on that to some extent.
I knew it was twenty five. I didn't know if the twenty, full or nearly full at the moment.
It starts because for the last two years, we actually haven't reached up to five. So last year we got to twenty three. But whereas in two thousand and nineteen, twenty, we sometimes have to cut off in November because it's a calendar year, so that's January.
I remember we discussed that sometimes it goes and we're still more than the available spaces. But should we reach twenty five? Does that put us in an even balance with the budget? Or does that mean we're still under budget and relying on the ashes?
It depends on parishioners versus non parishioners. It comes back to that. So, so, so there's a significance. You know, it's a five, you could pay eight hundred pounds for a, for a non parishioner. And I think the fee for a parishioner is as low as three hundred and thirty pounds. So that's your difference. And you can imagine on twenty five, if you, you know, even on ten. Burials with five hundred pounds difference, that's five thousand, five hundred and fifty pounds. So, so, so it does make a big difference.
That's why I was trying to compare, just by my style. Thank you.
I think the general point there though, Carla, is that we have to be mindful from a budget point of view because we are capped.
Yeah.
That if, if we ever got to a point where we had twenty five, say for example, a parishioner burial was a no no parishioner. That may be an income challenge, but you know. There'll be a.
Trying to understand, you know, because it does vary a lot of budget.
Well, our new budget hopefully takes into account some of that. Yeah, I was just thinking, I can't remember what we discussed, but good. So we are noting the amenities and cemetery reports. Moving on to six, four, eight small grounds, we have two small grant applications which have been circulated. Which one is first in mind? That is.
Your community church.
Cloverfield Community Church. And they want a shed because they're having a new boiler installed. And they need additional space at the church and they're not asking for the full amount. They're asking for a hundred pound less, three hundred and ninety one, I think. From memory.
Interesting.
They've gone through the assessment criteria and they are eligible. Any questions on Cloverfield Community Church?
Seems a weird amount, three hundred and ninety one. And obviously boilers and things are going to fluctuate up and down. Can we say, well, we'll, we can only give them what they asked for? Can we say, well, we'll?
We're giving the price of the shed, not the boiler. So I suspect it's a very specific amount because that's the set price for the shed.
That's why I understood that they are buying literally the shed, which is a specific amount, you know.
Thank you. Okay. No questions. Can I have a proposer? Hazel and a second up, Carla, all in agreement? Noted. I'm abstaining, Mr B.
I'm abstaining because my wife is a member of the church.
Thank you very much. Really noted. And.
Build a shed for her. Build a shed for her. I couldn't build a flaming nest box, never mind.
The second application, sorry.
I was just going to say, because the church are working quite hard raising funds for this air source heat pump boiler to be cut in. So they presumably they, they didn't want to ask for money towards that.
They might be able to get grant for that.
Well, they're doing all sorts of different, looking for different ways to raise money. But anyway, just thought I'd raise that they are working hard on fundraising for that new boiler system.
Yep. Okay, the second application is GW Stanley Four Bowls Club. They are asking for money for repair work to the bowling green and.
No, this is the replacement of a mower.
Oh, is that?
Yeah.
I was reading the breakdown of the cost.
Ben Burgess has quoted for a replacement.
It did, I did read about the green and then it said about the.
Yeah, in the, I read the full application and it listed.
Yeah, that was last year's application.
Oh, sorry. Is that what we were circulated?
No, I hope not.
I definitely didn't read about a mower in the, the small grant architecture.
I, I did read about. I, I did read about that one. Just to, just to counteract that.
Never mind.
Prepared in four hours yesterday, so.
The club's mower straight cutter has been declared inoperable by local company Ben Burgess due to age, shortage of parts, excessive cost to repair. We can purchase a good second hand one from around the same price. So far we've raised seven hundred pounds, five hundred pounds from a local restaurant, two hundred pounds from members. If we got the five hundred pound grant, we could set the wheels in motion, uh huh, to buy a second hand one. This will help keep the greens' good reputation as one of the best in Norfolk. Any questions? We've had Stanley Four Bowls Club before. How long ago was that?
It was in the previous year.
That was in the previous year. Good. Can I have a proposer? Stuart Terry, a second up, Mike Brindle, just for variety.
People, we, we, what we've recommended is that we actually say if they don't get the additional funding, that, 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 because that's the risk to on this whole project is that they could stop getting funding. And then we've approved the grant, but there'd be nothing to show us for it. So it's, so either that's reapplied for any purpose or refunded. So if we could stipulate that or agree that stipulation in the agreement.
So we're looking for an agreement subject to evidence of, uh, um, all other funds being in place. Members happy to approve with that condition? Thank you very much. Uh, any other small grants, Alan?
No, uh, we have got one where someone submitted. We don't know. They, they didn't put their organisation name. They gave a charity number that doesn't exist. Charity is registered. So we don't have to written back to them last year.
Uh, okay, so we've got a six grand a year budget. We've spent five two four two. So my maths would be that we've taken it close to six thousand. So if we do receive one for our March meeting, which is the last meeting of the year, that's roughly about.
I think there is one that the paperwork only came through in February, so we approved it. So that won't be there because we don't accrue it. So there's, it possibly is five hundred pounds. And that's the bit of church. It took them quite a while to, to sign all the paperwork from outside.
Lovely. Um, do you want to tell the committee about the lovely cheque that you've purchased?
Oh, yes.
Very exciting.
This, after seeing the chairs present the, the, use a cheque that they're going to be scraped around. He bought it a nice, uh, uh, five hundred cheque. Speaking of our office brands, thank you. So with each you, uh, use it, please just get hold of us, we'll get it to you.
Lovely. If you move on to our item six fifty. Apologies Karen for jumping around with the minutes. I'm sure you'll make some sort of coherence out of it. Involvement in the Great British Spring Clean Event. This is a request from me and you would have seen the report circulated. This is something that happens every year across the country. In their own words, it says it's the nation's biggest mass action environmental campaign. No reason to doubt them, but that's what they claim. It's something I've been involved in before. What we're proposing is that Fettford Town Council take part in this and we organise two litter picking events as part of the spring clean. That will be on Friday, the twenty second and Saturday, the twenty third of March. Chosen those two days to allow families to participate on the Saturday if they wanted. The costs will be met from the open space maintenance fund and the idea is that it will be between ten and twelve with tea, coffee and cake provided for participants afterwards in the guild hall. And because I know he's super efficient, I've put the activity will be led by the town team manager. Thanks, Nick. Any questions from anybody? Hazel.
I was just wondering if this could be an opportunity to link up with the river group as well, if they did a river clean.
Well, I'm hoping, obviously subject to capacity, but the more groups we contact, whether that be the BTO, local schools, businesses, river group, you know, the more on eve a day, the Friday or the Saturday, let's get, let's get a huge number of people along. Okay, everyone happy?
Litter picks, is there a predefined area of preference where the F F F are going to be focused on?
What I think would be useful is if we, um, had a rough list of hospitals. Because we don't all want to go live in the same area because that'd be fairly pointless.
Got all the participants involved, just dispersed, maybe focus in areas, specific areas or squads at a time.
Yes.
Target for that.
A, a few maps outlining key routes, I think would be really useful.
Useful.
Our parks in the town centre are particularly messy, I noticed the other day. Okay, I'm happy to propose that one. Is somebody happy to second? Hazel, all in agreement? Thank you very much. Town council, item six five one, the council's floral displays for twenty twenty four. Apologies, this was my fault that this one's bounced on you a bit this evening. Um, but it is in your pack and I'll just go through each of the bullet points. Um, Fettford has achieved silver in the Anglia and Bloom competition for the past two years running. In twenty twenty four, we are aiming for gold. This report details actions to be undertaken by Fettford Town Council to achieve that aim and seeks the approval of the amenities committee. Additional suggestions are very welcome. So the first item is that Fettford Town Council will continue to provide a hundred and twenty nine hanging baskets around the town centre. These will be put up in May and watered daily by the contractor. I took a guess at daily, I couldn't remember, I thought it was. Um, the town council will seek sponsorship of fifty pounds per hanging basket to help contribute towards the cost of these. And we will seek sponsorship for barrels and tubs at a hundred and fifty pounds per item. We always used to seek sponsorship and it kind of dropped off the radar. And I don't think for a few years now, we've asked for any sponsorship at all. Uh, and when we say barrels and tubs, we're talking about the free tier ones near the post office and the ones around the market square and that sort of thing. So you were basically saying we want to carry on the hanging basket display. Lots of towns are cutting back on things like this, but it's always very popular in Fettford. But actually go out and seek sponsorship as well. Members happy with that?
Yep.
Cool. Second item is the town council will continue to provide its four barrier planters, five troughs and five two tier barrier planters, all located at various points around the town centre, including King's Square and the marketplace. The town council will coordinate the purchase of necessary plants and compost and will organise volunteer planting sessions to help with this. The two areas nearest to the Carnegie will also be planted. That's the square area at the front of the Carnegie and the circular area at the side near Well Street. The area around the Fettford Town sign on London Road that also belongs to Fettford Town Council will also be planted and maintained, as will the marketplace roundabout. Happy with that? Hazel.
Um, this is probably the other thing as well is this. So how much do we do already in terms of choosing plants that are local Brekton specialities or generally good for pollination?
So we've tried the local cemetery to do a little bit of that, sort of use perennials and annuals up there. Tend to mostly in the town centre use bedding plants because they give the effect more with coloured displays. But there's no reason why we can't look at sort of urban planting and different ideas potentially going forward.
Could we have a, um, a sort of wish list? From, I think of somebody like Ian or, you know, maybe other contacts at the BTO. A sort of, you know, a, a guide of if you could incorporate these, that'd be really useful.
Yeah.
Okay, item three, the town council will take responsibility for new planting areas. Establishing cultivation agreements for Breckland Council where necessary. The additional locations will be the two square planters at the bottom of Riverside Walk, the shrub bed running adjacent to the river next to Argos and the shrub bed running alongside the river nearest to the Bell Hotel. And lastly, the shrub beds running alongside St Martin's Way near to London Road. I think the shrub beds particularly would benefit from native plants and sort of, you know, perennials more so than bedding plants actually, because they won't be watered as often. Because I'm giving you a hard time, not trying to do too much work, but I am going to keep pushing.
Yep.
Members happy with that? The town council will create its first pocket park, working in partnership with the local community, the small green area on Formaston Road. And also incorporate the Charles Borough Memorial Garden on Stanley Fourth Road. That's the sort of first test of our pocket park proposal. To ensure community involvement and help with the planting and maintenance tasks, new Fettford in Bloom volunteers will be recruited. The town council will organise a weekly in bloom volunteering session every Friday between tell ten and twelve. This is subject to your new staff members. I'm not expecting you to start straight line. Volunteers will assist with planting areas, maintaining them, including the removal of weeds and assisting with watering. A sum of one thousand pounds will be allocated from the open space maintenance fund to help with costs, including suitably branded clothing, tools where necessary and refreshments. The opportunity to join the in bloom volunteer team will be promoted in the March, April art hour newsletter. Happy with that? And the town council will enter free Anglia in Bloom categories, cemeteries, which is a category in its own right, large town and best conservation project. Entry costs will be met from the open space maintenance budget. And lastly, the town council will repeat the Fettford in Bloom competition with the four categories as identified in the previous competition. That's the front garden competition and best business display and that sort of thing. Is everybody happy with those recommendations?
Yep.
You are happy? I'm happy to propose those. Would somebody like to second? Stuart, in agreement?
Pretty much.
Uh, six five three, health and safety matters. Any health and safety matters to note? None. Thank you. Six five four, correspondence. Is there any correspondence to note?
Yeah.
Six five five, action points from the previous meeting?
Yeah, I do, I put the, if it lasts, that's, that's, the criticism, because I do apologise.
Okay.
So the ones behind us, we've actually agreed to, but leave it to the vibrant agency, the town team manager to contact ETC, Fettford Academy regarding the refurbishment of the underpass across the road. That's in progress. The officers to investigate any other options identified in the discussion to the end of the new office. The council's vehicle fleet, that's still in progress. Uh, we're looking at the investigating that ownership and sustainability of the station, but done by Fettford Grammar School. I think your report says that you've actually got that down, so that can come out.
Yep.
Schedule a review of the cemetery rules. We targeted that to be completed by the 30th of June twenty twenty four. Writing to Historic England, just, you know, regarding the time, second to get consent. And we might actually want to wait for consent to come in before we, before we do that. And then lastly, just, you know, the liaison with the, um, Ian Woodward to develop a wildfire meta action plan.
Yep.
And that would be done before.
So there's that one there that we can remove that you mentioned and also uh, contact Cloverfield Church because they've done that.
That's, that's.
That's already been taken.
Those are the ones that we'd actually.
Lovely.
That we, uh, actually.
Could we add on to the actions from tonight about the letter that needs to be sent to the highways about the crossing?
Yeah.
Are there any other actions people want added from discussions this evening?
That's a great question. Last time we mentioned about taking over some pocket parks, a token value. Where, where are we standing on that? Have we sort of finalised or look over any and?
Delayed by Brekland quite a bit. They, um, surprised us a little bit and said, oh, we don't want to lease these bits of land to you. We'd rather you took ownership of the land. Uh, and we're waiting to see, aren't we, what, how much they want to sell them to us for. They're so generous. So we don't know where we're at with the bigger list. We're waiting for Brekland, but that will come back at some point when we know.
Yeah, but we may say majority of them would be a pound. We're just a token value, it's just.
Yeah, but we.
Ownership of them. But.
So chase officers up today at Brekland, um, this morning, but I haven't heard any response back. Um, because the last update I had from them was that they were waiting for their surveyor to come back with a overall cost in an outlay. Um, but originally when we took discussions up with them, um, they've kind of come and said that they would be a nominal fee that they would probably look at for the areas that they would like to transfer over. So it would be quite a loan.
Which is back on Brekland's red tape plus their decision why they're nominal for me, may or may not be.
Yeah. We will continue to pressure them and get them.
To know.
Yeah.
Uh, again, that's action points, community engagement, anything to note? Well, whilst we've got our lovely big cheque, Hazel, can I task you with liaison with Cloverfield Church about their presentation? I think that'd be good, just for some fed up seeing my own face in the paper. But, uh, what was that we did tonight? For, for, would you like to do that? I mean, by all means, let other councillors on the committee know, but, um, yeah, just to promote the, the fact that we're supporting them. Uh, committee officers update, received an update from the committee officer since the agenda will proceed. Could there possibly be anything else?
There is.
But I'm going to stop for by one.
You've seen the floor. You've already lost two members. Lions, it just go on. Me too. We lost three, Chris, Matt and Mike. Oh dear.
One is the water transfer licence. When we had the fish pass, uh, uh, finished, we actually, we're supposed to have a water transfer licence in place this July. Uh, we've been liaising with the vibrant agency. It's going to cost us one thousand five hundred pounds on there today. But we have to get that licence in place. They've been threatening us a little bit, but I actually managed to find someone quite, quite accommodating. It ran through the process to be about the third or fourth time. Uh, but again, just again, one of those instances where we should have got a professional in and just got them to do the application. The forms are about that thick. They said five hundred pounds a pocket, actually it really is tough and difficult. And the officer time wasted of that has just been horrendous, so.
It's so, really sorry. What was that?
A water transfer licence. The fish pass transfers water from the river there to the Little Ouse. We need it. We have to have a licence to do that.
It's an annual, annual licence.
I'm happy it's not, I'm happy it's a one off licence.
Me too, fifteen hundred pounds.
Wanting more to transfer it to that pool?
That's because we, we've formalised it. So we, we transfer the water apparently. I'm quite happy to send the booklet for you to stay. The charges alone is, is, is about that thick, just to work up where your trials is at. We are prepared to, so I'll, I'll be the, the rest is Nick.
Yeah, so just a recap. So Castle Park, um, we are just continuing to lobby Historic England to get works progressing as soon as possible. We are keep, you know, sort of highlighting that the bird nesting season is fast approaching. Um, so we'd like to sort of get those works proceeding. Um, so that's obviously with the secondary estate, Barnham Common. So we, we've got works carrying out at the moment. They did start again today. They had started, unfortunately we had to stop because the consent that we was given from Natural England um, didn't proceed too long and we have to then reapply. So that's now began again today. And the other one is Brekland Council. So it's a bit of an update on the dog fouling. So, um, I went over to officers at Brekland to see if we can sort of work together as councils going forward um, to combat issues. And they've come back with a first step of proposal for us here at the town council. Um, so basically they're saying, obviously, um, in the short term, they will try and concentrate on the Brekland owned areas and getting signage up. Um, but unfortunately I don't have the budget for putting signage up onto a very zone by other councils. So they have come up with the idea of they will enforce any problems with dog waste fouling, any fly tipping on town council land. Um, but we would obviously have to display the Brekland signage to say that there was an enforcement in place. Um, so they, they obviously want to meet with us. They're coming over shortly. Um, the dog warden and one of their officers. And they're also going to start trying to do some on the spot fines. Um, and obviously gathering evidence of anybody, um, you know, letting the dogs foul. Um, so they are taking it serious and realise that, you know, there is an issue and it is a criminal activity that they're carrying out, these owners of the dogs. So they will be prosecuted going forward.
On, on that subject, dog fa- now, I don't know how true this is, but I heard that if an owner is found, obviously, big dog fouling, it's an on the spot sixty pound fine. Okay, now if the owner, his dog's foul and he picks the dog stuff up, puts in a bag and then hangs it on a tree, it's a six hundred pound fine for fly tipping.
No.
Is that correct?
I can imagine it would be, yeah. Yeah, with the laws in place, yeah. Because you're then attempting to then, like you say, dispose of it, which is a fly tipping offence, which then carries the extra. Yeah.
How about that then? Hazel.
Um, so is this discussion specifically about the places listed before?
No, this is going to be across the town wide. So they, they are proposing that they obviously realise there is these few areas at the moment that have got issues. Um, but we are sort of pressuring them as the district, but they have responsibility. They are the enforcing authority. They do have the powers to enforce, so they are coming on board and obviously recognising that we obviously have open spaces as town council. And they will try and work with us to try and put enforcement in place on our land as well as their own.
Okay, it would be good as well, once they have agreed to enforcing and various things, to have guidance on how we tell residents to communicate that.
Yeah.
So just for clarity, what they're essentially saying is if we pay for the signage, which meets a certain legal criteria, says certain stuff, um, they will do the enforcement for us. which meets a certain legal criteria, says certain stuff, um they will do the enforcement for us.
That's correct.
Sounds like a good investment.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do we have a budget for signs?
We do.
Yeah, for our street furniture. Uh the committee generally happy with that approach.
That expensive, isn't it?
Three pounds.
Uh so the cost of a sign at the moment um is about forty six pounds per sign.
I think we're happy with the general principle and look forward to an update at the next meeting.
Twenty.
Yeah.
I assume Breck can get the fine.
He would, yeah.
Just checking.
You really got catched first in hand, didn't you?
For his guy, just thank you, thank you for for the amount of work that he gets through and work he puts in getting this meeting done. It really is incredible, you know, and I'd just like to thank him for his support and his positivity and the way he manages things. So it's just, I just want to put that on record, I think it's really.
Absolutely, I think now I can. I don't watch that, but I do, I do get the reference. Uh no, I think I can say on behalf of the whole committee, uh Nick, very grateful for.
Yeah.
Our work, thank you. And yeah, all the team, I mean, uh you know, everyone's um churning through some really great stuff. Actually, it's really, the thing about amenities is it's actually the stuff that as councillors, we get contacted about the most. I mean, things like dog fouling and, you know, we've heard tonight speeding. And actually, these are things that matter to people and it's lovely that we're able to make a difference through you. We just turn up and talk, but you know, you actually.
No, I can, I can obviously say on behalf of the town team, you know, we're very keen to work with other councils. We are gradually making progress um over that, you know, both with Norfolk and Breckland. Um so hopefully going forward, you know, we can, you know, do a joint effort. We're all trying to carry out the same thing. At the end of the day, we're our public service. Um so in time, fingers crossed, we will be able to sort of make progress a lot more.
Very much appreciate it. Thank you.
That uh super positive note, uh meeting closed, thank you.